Summer rec Alyssa and I spoke, so we cut it by half an hour this week from eleven thirty to eleven. And they did their, they did, you know, because of the heat and they're doing all the water activities. She really didn't want to cancel, I said, I don't think you need to cancel, just do the water activities, so she's been doing great. Um, there gets, some companies have donated, I think Banger donated some food, some snacks to them. Kind of planning some things like maybe doing a big meal at the end, Sonic Lodge, I guess, uh, was cooked before, so, they're going well.
Is there anything left, like, from what we had started last year or the year before with, like, the plants and, you know, all that, we were gonna do, uh, talked about doing like that basin.
It's got weeds in it now.
That's all finished now?
Yeah.
So, are we, are we, are we done with all that then?
I mean, no, we're still, I mean, any time we want to update something, I mean.
Right, I just meant what we had planned for, I mean, is that all, that's all it does?
Yeah, that's all done, all the plants are.
Trees in that, like, the main thing was the fountain thing.
Vinnie Zubor had cleared out his, uh, flower beds and stuff, him and John did. So, like, I'd say probably ninety percent of the flowers that are down there right now are from Vinnie's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, good.
It looks real nice.
Yeah, yeah, it does, I just, I couldn't remember if there was anything else we were still.
No, I think the main, the last thing that we were working on was that, uh, the fountain, the head watch station thing.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's done.
Thank you, Daniel.
Did you ever get the, uh?
Swing up, yes, no.
Did you ever get?
I got it in, I got the swing frame in, I was hoping to have it in before Connor, real quick, Volunteer Day. Um, because some of the guys were gonna help me put it in. Well, now, it came in, I think it was like two weeks after the Volunteer Days. Um, but, uh, Jamie is still going to get some people together to help me put it in, it's just whenever he gets a chance to get free. Because we've got the two swings that were originally supposed to have something, uh, manufactured to go on the existing frame that's down there, and then we found out that that would void the warranty on it. So, they've just been sitting in the shed. But, yeah, that's why I got that swing frame.
Subdivision items?
Yeah.
I don't know what.
The Joyce Station. So, you guys have any?
Lease items?
Oh, Brian.
He's had a bad couple of weeks.
Come on up. Pull it here.
So, we have our squad car.
Hey, you wanna come on up here, we'll have our.
There's a chair.
There's a chair right up here.
I'm good.
Okay.
We have our squad car, um, I'm still getting quotes for the install of all the lights and everything, the laptop, the camera. So, I should have it here pretty quick. So, once I do, I'll just bring that to the board.
All right, just a question real quick, are, are they putting in a modified backseat, a hard seat in the back of that? Or are they gonna try to put a front and back cage?
It's a, it's a cage, a front and back cage, yeah.
So, apparently the Durango's, we didn't know this, the front and back cage are not one kit. Front and back cage are separate kits, each the same price, so that.
I'll check with the install.
Um, and it drastically, the cage that they recommend drastically alters the front seats' locations, like, puts them very far up. This is what we're sort of hearing.
Okay.
Uh, so apparently there, there's a hard seat back modified version, apparently maybe out there, that would scoot the backseat shorter, and then the driver and passenger seats don't have to be pushed as far up.
It's a hard?
We don't know yet, but your cage price may double.
Okay, I'll check.
They're, they're doing Chevy builds as well, so I'll see what Chevyville are into.
Yeah, see if they, and if, before they just shoot you a price, or if they do, see if they have any options maybe.
Okay.
Is this what Decatur has?
Well, this is.
Or Macon County?
We, there's apparently some, we've, we've heard this.
There's been some scuttle that you've heard, Gary, just.
There's, we don't know yet, cause we, we haven't had a chance to even get a full bid yet, because.
Well, I'm glad you had yours out.
Maybe then we could get some advice from us then. I don't know.
Yeah.
I would just check with them, just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
That's why it was so cheap.
No, no, it would just be the, the fit out, it, it's the, yeah, there's always something.
Who does that?
Um, we're using Craig Antenna, that does our radios out of Pana, they did the last squad car for us, so.
Who does Decatur use?
Yeah, I don't know, man, everybody's trying to find somebody.
Yeah.
So, um.
Do they do lights and everything?
Here, grab one of these and pass them around, there's thirty pages. So, we gotta figure out something since we keep losing officers, what can we do? Um. So. Um. We're not competitive with our pay for our, uh, new officers, so we pay our full-time officer twenty-one fifty, I think he was at twenty-one sixty or something, wasn't he? Um, Angel, was it twenty-one?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Tw- twenty-two, okay. Um, so he was at twenty-two, the other department's around twenty-five an hour. Um, so our part-time officers, we have one hired in two thousand twenty-two and one was hired in two thousand seventeen, they make fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents a, an hour. Um, that's why we don't see him come to work for us, Casey's right now here in town's offering seventeen dollars for an assistant manager. Um, so if you can go work at Casey's for seventeen, why be a part-time police officer? Um, it doesn't make sense for, for that. Um. So, I, I don't know what we can do. Um. We have to make sure we're competitive, I know we don't have insurance, I, I don't know what the option is for that. Uh, but you can't buy insurance for a family for five hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents a month. Um, it's just not feasible. Um, that's why we lost both of our past two officers, they went to agencies that have insurance. Um. And, and I don't, I don't know the answer, because if we try to get insurance, then it's gonna cost a lot. But then, some employees don't want insurance, which is fine, you shouldn't be forced to take insurance if your spouse has it elsewhere. Um, but it is tough for those that don't have insurance too, or they can't find it for the five eighty-six. Um, so I, so I, I don't, I don't know the answer on that, I mean, we, we just cut police salary budget this year by six grand. I mean, that would have been helpful to have, but again, we didn't know that until now, so it's like, what, what, what do we do? Um.
What hours does the other officer work?
There are no other officers, it's me.
I thought we had a part-time.
They, they haven't been working.
They, they don't work because they make fifteen dollars and seventy-five cent, they don't.
David worked during Assumption Fest.
Yeah, he, he did, yeah, he did.
He hasn't worked in any of this year.
Yeah. Um, he's a full-time officer somewhere else, so, I mean, he's gonna be doing, you know, he's gonna be focused on that job. Um, Justin is a full-time parole officer for Department of Corrections, so he has three hundred parolees, I think. So, he's busy, he's not gonna come over, it costs him money to drive, David lives in Rochester, Justin lives in Sherman, so they're not, I mean, they lose money to drive to work here. So, they can't, you know, they can't come to work and not make money. Um. One thing I think we could do immediately, I don't know if it would kill people, but, so, when you start for the city of assumption, doesn't matter what job, as a full-time employee, you have to work here one year before you get vacation time, and then you get one week. So, we just lost an officer, he went to an agency, they immediately gave him two weeks vacation. Um, most places full-time, if you go somewhere now, they're gonna give you two weeks vacation, it doesn't matter what job you're doing. Um, I think some of the factory jobs are offering two weeks vacation right now, that doesn't really affect our bottom line, because we're gonna pay them if they're working or not, right? So, that, that's something maybe that we could look at. Um, after you work here two years to ten years, it takes working here, um, well, you get two weeks. So, at your eleventh year, you get three weeks vacation, so that's something maybe we can look at. I don't know, these are ju, I don't have the answer, I'm just putting this on paper so we can all see it.
Yeah.
Um.
If you change the vacation, you have to change it across the board for every hire.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, all, all full-time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so what is, what's Shelby and Christian's position on allowing their deputies to do basically buyback, you know, buyback hours and work, send extra shifts over here, will they allow that?
Um, I don't know.
Because doesn't?
We, we can't pay them to do that.
Well, no, I mean, we can, some of them will have a policy where they don't allow them to work for other law enforcement agencies.
Right.
They, they wouldn't pay them, we would, but it's whether or not Christian and Shelby will even allow it.
Well, Shel- Shelby will not, because they're not in Christian County, probably. Um, Christian may, but, but here's my question, why would we do that, why wouldn't we pay our own officers to do that? Like, why, why pay, so then, if you're already contracting out, then why have a department, I mean?
Well, no, I mean, like, basically hire them part-time.
Right.
Like, using those part-time officers, cause they, like, so like, a lot of the counties, they do, like, transports, they do after-hours work at the library, work at the bus station, I didn't know if Christian would allow them, since it's technically a.
You're gonna pay for it, though. You're gonna pay more than twenty-five dollars an hour, I bet you.
But if you don't have to pay benefits and stuff, and it's on a part-time basis, like a fill-in.
Why not, why not pay assumption officers twenty-five dollars an hour?
Well, I agree with you there, yeah.
So, here's what I think.
I'll, I'll work buyback if I get paid more, cause I'm salaried, so I can't, I can't make anymore, so if you're gonna offer that, then I'll do it.
Well, I mean, so what I'm talking about is like, like, Christian, say for example, on their off days, I mean, we can pay them, we don't have to pay them a set, we pay them twenty-five bucks an hour, wherever we wanna pay them.
Right.
It's just whether or not Christian will actually let them, because they're actually on street patrol.
Right.
Cause sometimes they have a non, you know, can't work for two agencies at the same time.
Right, well, they, they, so they wouldn't be working for us, they would be working for Christian, we would just be paying them.
See, that's what I was wondering, if that.
Right, cause they're not gonna let them work for, for something, they're.
I think they would.
No.
So, what is, is it Blue Mountain, or which one of the Macon ones basically contract, like, the sheriff's department is there?
So, so Macon just reverted back to Macon County?
Okay.
And the problem they're having is the Macon officer is doing their job, so the people in Macon are getting stopped, they're getting tickets, they're not liking that, but, but that's what you're gonna get if you contract out.
Yeah.
Because the officers don't know the people in town, they don't know who maybe could deserve a warning versus who deserves a ticket, or.
My only wonder is, at some point, if we keep paying for the training, paying for PTO, paying all of these expenses to get them up and running, only for them to get cherry picked by other agencies, at some point, cost-wise, it's gonna be better to pay three part-timers than having one full-timer, because you don't have.
Right, but we're not even, you know, that's, I mean, that's an option, but we're not paying our part-timers that, you know what I mean?
That can be changed.
So, like, look on, look on page two, it costs us twenty-three thousand dollars for, for one officer. I mean, the, I, the big problem, I think, is we're not, so, I understand losing officers to county, state police, bigger agencies, but to lose them to a small agency?
Yeah.
That's, that's, I mean, we're, I mean, we shouldn't.
I guess my thing is those five or six extra dollars an hour to a part-timer is never gonna come close to the twenty-three thousand.
The people demanded that we have another officer.
But you, if you have three part, say, three part-time officers making twenty-five bucks an hour, if that's, or thirty-dollar, wherever it takes to get part-timers in here, you will never spend as much money on that as what it costs to train one new person from scratch. Basically, we, we're paying, we paid, the week was training expenses, and, and we get nothing, you know, we get a year out of it. But three part-time officers, if you pay them, if one of them leaves, so what? You're, you're, you don't have any training invested in them, you know, cause they're gonna have to be certified before.
Well, you, you have, you, they have to maintain training, yeah, they do.
Well, right, but I mean, we're not paying from scratch, we're not paying from.
Right, they're already, right, yeah, they're already, yeah.
Well, you got a point, because there's no, we're on board about the insurance.
Insurance.
Yeah.
Or their vacation time.
We can't have just Brian being our only full-time cop, we need another one a year, and we need to take care of them.
Yes.
I don't know that you're gonna, I think we're just gonna keep doing this, it's just gonna be a repeating cycle with full-timers. Cause as soon as you get them up and eligible, everybody's gonna outpay.
Maybe seeing around more too.
If you don't make it competitive, we're gonna have that problem, you're right, but we gotta be competitive.
I don't know. Cause we have to, we can't pay them more than what we're paying our chief.
We, we're paying our guys twenty-two dollars an hour when the next town's paying twenty-five an hour.
Um, the next town didn't pay the seven thousand, that equivalents to the twenty-five.
They, they did, they did, they, their officers were to, went to the academy too.
But I mean, they didn't have to train, and we ain't, that.
Right, right.
There's a big difference too, and if they're, have experience, when you hire them, it's gonna be more money than hiring somebody that has no experience and we're paying for everything.
I agree.
I mean, that's a total difference when you get a new person.
No, getting back to Brian, uh, you know, he, no, he shouldn't be the only one right now, we do need, but isn't, um, I thought we had this discussion with the resource officer that he could kick in and help.
He's not interested in doing that.
No.
Um, but I thought, what is, what is his contract with this?
So, the Muequa officer gets paid, uh, his salary for the school, and then they buy him back overtime. So, but Doug doesn't wanna buy back overtime. So, it'd be the same as Gary's talking about.
Yeah, so his employment is just for the school year?
Yeah, Doug, Doug and Justin, so, so the school pays fifty percent of the salary and benefits for both of the school officers. Muequa's decided, hey, if, if Justin wants to come, or whoever their SRO is, come back and help us in the summer, we'll pay him hourly. Um, we've asked Doug that, and he's already, he did twenty-six years with Decatur, he's not interested in coming to work.
But Justin is. I thought one of the things that they talked about with that resource officer was, they increased the pay because he was going to work part-time during the summer.
No, because he's, he had to have three years' experience before he could even be considered at the school.
We have, we have a contract with the school on the payment, but I don't think there's anything on there, I mean, it's work hours and things to that feature, but nothing on him working.
Was it just something said that he would help if we needed help in the summer, though? You have to, I'll go back in a second, I thought it was.
Yeah, condition, does he get paid in the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought he did, cause we averaged it out just over the twenty-six.
Yeah.
Pay periods rather than.
Right, he's actually in, um, in, in training this week, or for like two or three days, he's at a conference, cause he has to have current training up to date, so.
It's not like we're, we're on the ages, this is every little.
Oh, I know.
It is, but there is some things we can definitely, I, I, at the vacation time, I think we could definitely fix that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Part-timers, vacation times.
Well, no, I'm not talking about but part-timers, I'm talking about full-timers.
I think part-timers is your immediate answer right this minute, even if we hire somebody full-time right now.
No, I really think we need a full-time.
How many months before he's, we're back to where we were? He'd probably be what?
I, I, I would say yes, but if you don't pay him, it's gonna be sooner.
Well, what if you ask for somebody that has experience, and that way you don't have to pay for the training, and you can take that, pay for the training, take that money towards their salary.
Yeah.
That training's only a one-time process, right?
It is.
But you don't have benefits, so then you leave that on that too.
So, I did ask Brian today when the next class would be, and he mentioned in August, so it'd be in like, August sixteenth or something, and a run to December twentieth.
If we.
September third.
No, September third, okay, okay, I did.
It would be.
We'll probably have them two years or less.
Oh, wait, wait, no, no, Selena, I haven't.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, right.
Oh, no, you wanna look at that, you're right.
Where if we, if we look at bumping the part-timer pay and put the feelers out there, you could have somebody in two, three weeks. Otherwise, you're talking the end of the year before you see another officer.
Oh, yeah, it's December twentieth, yeah.
What's wrong with just trying somebody part-time for a while, and seeing, seeing how it works, I mean, I don't.
We gotta get her paid.
Sounds like you're gonna wait anyway, right?
We can change the pay, I mean, that just has to be voted on next year, so we, you're, you're right, that's not a real issue.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's something holding it back.
But we would need to understand what that pay would it be, you know, what, is that somebody that's one-year experience, and, or, you know, what if?
Be state-qualified, long as you're state-certified and qualified, that's all that matters.
And paying for them.
I mean, that would be, I don't think experience really makes any difference, as long as they're certified.
As long as they're certified, yeah.
On the street you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as they're in good standing with the state.
Yeah.
Can you get some wages around for part-time officers from other communities?
Yeah, the, the lowest is like twenty-five, I think, so.
And when you say part-time, what, how many hours does that consist of?
Well, it'd be up to them, cause we're not, so he.
Well, not necessarily, if we say we want twenty hours a week, then that's what we put out there as our requirement.
You will not get that, you will not get that.
I think you have to have.
It's a, it's an officer's marker right now, you, I, I don't even know.
They have the upper hand.
I don't think you would get part-time people for twenty-five an hour, but that's just me.
Somehow figure it out, what needs to be changed to get these officers that are hired full-time to get them to stay.
Yeah.
No, I, I had to agree with you, paying on that, we do need to look at things to improve.
It's tough, but, you know what, why not, other bigger, every step you go up, they, they can just throw money at it, you'll never.
But like, like Home Depot was paying the security seventy dollars an hour.
Well, yeah, but they, what, how many hours did they work a week?
Uh, they did it for like two weeks. So, cause it was a, it was a, like a security contract.
But, yeah, they don't, but they don't pay them benefits and stuff, it's kinda like a traveling nurse, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't get benefits, but you get a higher pay.
Decatur, um, the banks hire the, uh, Decatur officers back, and Walmart used to, and they paid them, I don't even know what they pay them, but it was.
Sure what they pay them, well, they have an.
It was worthwhile for the officers to not go make overtime doing their normal job to go sit at Walmart.
Well, cause they have an officer at the Decatur Public Library, they have one at the bus station, Civic Center, I think, they do buybacks on, uh, events.
And it's just hourly, they don't have to pay benefits or anything, it doesn't go towards IRM, it doesn't, so, it's beneficial.
Yep.
Um.
So, if we place the most important thing, and I'm thinking about it, I was young again, going, uh, I'm not gonna look at vacation time and blah, 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 I'm going for where the money's at. How much is this place gonna pay, how much, just like you said, it's the traveling nurses. They, right now, they're not gonna pay attention to vacation time and everything, they're gonna go thirty dollars an hour, that's where I'm going.
Well, a number four.
Right off the bat, that's, it's gotta be the money.
But it's gotta be career, career organ it too.
Yeah, these, yeah, these are.
This is a stepping stone to go to where they wanna go, I mean, you can't lie them to stay here.
Yeah.
Some of these, this is the step to get into the next level.
Yeah, they like adrenaline, they like.
Get them over here to the staircase.
For years and years, there's a lot of them been through here.
At part-time, you're gonna get.
I don't think it's gonna change unless you're.
Retired guys, I mean, honestly, young guys who want as much hourly experience on the street as they can get.
Extra. Ex- extra money.
You're, everything in between, you're not, that's not even, that's not realistic, because they're home units, if they're an active, if they're eligible to be in the state, they're probably working.
Yeah, they're working at their.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
This is like obtaining your CEUs, you know, it's like obtaining your CEUs, like you said, and then we're moving on to champagne, or bigger boys.
It is, it is.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So, but the, the money is.
Yeah, I, I, I think we could probably get people if we pay them part-time, I do.
At this point, bodies on the streets, but.
I was going for the.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
And then.
We might even get people that we know.
Well, that's just what Kim said.
Well, I.
That have cars in town, maybe.
I, I, I do think that.
Maybe we could do.
If, if you're sending kids to the academy officers, if we're gonna pay for it, I think you, they need to do a contract where they have to stay on, that, do you have that now?
No, we brought that up, and it was, we ended it.
Well, we didn't have a contract, we had.
No, 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 Gary, we had a contract, and we ended it, cause I went through the minutes, and I watched the video, and we did, it was Chief Wade was against it, and we ended it. We ended it out of finance.
Because you thought it discouraged.
You have a copy of it, cause I said it to you.
It, it would discourage, yeah, and there's been several lawsuits.
Yeah.
Yes.
That have founded.
Had something in it, in mind as well.
There was so much, uh, went home.
Yeah, what happened, then, the conversation shifted to paying for ride-alongs and holidays, we were there, and then another alderman brought it, we never did it because the conversation then shifted, and then that's what took over everything. We never touched it again.
I, I, I think we need to have more discussions on, I don't think we're ready to make a decision, I definitely.
No, yeah.
Look at some more, look at some more part-time, because.
This is just. Yeah, see what we can do, cause I'm open.
Just like you said, you keep putting wages and wages and wages, where does it stop?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I don't know, it's.
If you wanna have police officers on the street, you gotta pay.
Um, I mean, so do you honestly think if we increase our wages like one percent, just to stay, um, competitive with the areas around us, do you think that would make people stay?
No.
No?
Cause we don't have benefits, so then they're gonna be making the same pay as these other people, and then realize, oh, I have, I could go here and make benefits.
Right.
Um, the, the problem, like Gary said, when you're hiring new officers, they come in, they get two years, and then they see, wow, I can go chase bad guys in Decatur, or I can go to Springfield, or I can go to state police and make an eighty-five thousand, or I can. So, we're constant, there's signing bonuses.
Signing bonus is.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think we can maybe stop the flow as fast as it's been, maybe? Like, maybe, and, and we've talked about different things, do we offer them at two years, do we say, hey, we'll give you two grand to stay for another year, I, like, what do, what do we do, I don't know, I'm open. I'm totally open to anything, cause we've done the hour thing, we've let them take off when they want, we've changed hours, we've done.
I'm truly afraid that we'll, we'll, it'll be a cat chasing its own tail, if you try to, try to get full-timers to stay.
Yeah.
I, I really, there, somebody will steal them every single time, or they'll, or, you know, like, state police, they'll just come in and be like, oh, I see some should be a three thousand dollar raise, here's twenty-five thousand dollar signing bonus if you hire with us, go on.
So, go with three part-timers, two part-timers.
See what we can.
I think as.
And pay them a salary, and they're part-time, so you don't have to pay them.
I, I might be able to get the guys we have now to work if we start paying them, honestly, and then get some more.
I mean, why not pay them twenty-five hours an hour, I mean, they're already trained, they're already, you know.
So, if they work twenty, I'm guessing probably twenty hours a week is pushing it for a part-time officer.
Yeah, they, they won't work that much, because they're already working forty hours at their current job, so they'll probably pick up a Sunday, or a Saturday, or a Friday, or they'll juggle their schedule around.
If you have three officers working fifteen hours a week, say, a ten-dollar jump in pay.
Yeah.
You're, you're only talking, what?
It's not.
It's only, it's about six.
Maybe like forty-five dollars an officer.
Yeah.
Extra, and I guarantee you, we're paying a, a, a full-time person way more than that a week, so you're, you're in the long run, you're, you're actually paying less.
Yeah, you're paying less.
Much less.
Did you have to pay the insurance check, or their IMR F?
Yeah.
Or just the salary, because you only got forty-five, basically, they, you, three part-timers fifteen hours a week is one full-time officer with no, you know, side benefits, no nothing, and their schedules are much more flexible than you have a full-timer.
But with the part-time, I think you do need to make, I think if you're gonna do that, and up their pay to twenty-five dollars an hour, I think like Fridays and Saturdays is definitely times that you need to have someone on.
I think it depends on where.
And it needs to be until the bar closes for sure.
I think it depends on where, who they are, depends on the.
If it's someone with experience, if it's our officers, it's.
Well, I mean, like, if they're a city officer, say, say they're a city officer in Taylorville, Taylorville's gonna want them on Friday and Saturday night as well. I mean, they have to be, it has to be available, I mean, it's.
Well, I think that those are the hours that is how we needed them most.
Yeah.
Personally, I mean, that's just my.
I think you're, you're gonna be paying forty or fifty an hour to get that.
Yeah. And you're gonna be competing against their home agencies, which.
Yeah, cause, so, so right now, full-time officers in other towns are making twenty-five. So, if they're already.
And that's what you wanna see at least.
Well, no, I'm just throwing it out there, like, I, I don't.
And I'm trying to catch it.
I don't think we could get three part-time people at twenty-five an hour. I don't think we could, I, maybe the two guys we have might come work more for us, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I, I, I mean, it's.
It's worth a try, I wonder if we.
I was gonna say, we're gonna have to write out there and just see if you get any, like, pin it out there in the newspapers and pin it out.
There's a lot of retired officers working other type, I know a lot of the, a lot of the city guys that I know and stuff, they.
Yeah.
They retire when they become eligible, but they can still work another twenty-five years.
Right.
You know, and they don't mind picking up, you know, maybe even just a shift a week.
Yeah.
Even if they take one eight-hour shift a week, it's better than nothing.
Yeah.
How many part-timers does Muequa have, do they have any part-timers or they all?
No, they don't have part timers.
You don't have none?
They've announced that Isaac's gonna work part time, but I I bet money he's not going to.
I just thought maybe if they had a part timer that would be willing to come down here and work for us part time, that, you know.
Yeah, they don't have anybody, no.
They use not send people before training either. Jared Mather wanted.
Uh, ev- everything we could use, yeah.
What'd you say Darren?
Well, you can't, we can't reuse the vest, cause you have to buy a brand new vest for each officer, so, stuff like that.
Benefits, you're talking benefits for the employee or the whole family, that's the whole difference.
Yeah, 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 you're right, yeah.
Well, in the state law or federal law or one of them, you can't work. You have to offer insurance after it's over so many hours, isn't it thirty two? Or thirty six?
We offer after uh thirty days.
No, you know, part time workers.
Oh, you mean working?
Thirty two hours.
Thirty two hours before you have to offer benefits, so they wouldn't be able to work.
No more than thirty two hours a week, right?
You won't get people to work thirty two hours.
Find anybody part time who worked thirty two hours anyway.
I think that's an average through the year too, you could work twenty and forty.
What'd you say Darren?
You could work twenty and forty, it's an average, and you could work two weeks and get forty hours in or whatever, you know, your forties, but then the next week off and all that. You just can't average more than that fifty two weeks.
Wade, do they have a way that you can, like a. I don't like a, not really an inter male thing between the agencies or whatever, or something you can put out to the other, some of the other ones saying, hey. If you have any of your retired guys.
Come see.
Would they be interested or?
What do you feel, Brian, and we're just talking about part time, like we've been talking, I mean, what do you, I mean, you still are not really. Gung ho or not gung ho, but do not, don't feel really warm and fuzzy about twenty five, what do you think, what what?
I don't know, I I.
Thirty?
Yeah, I mean, at thirty you might, I don't know, so the academy pays twenty five for role players and thirty for instructors right now. And you do not have to go on the street and have to worry about somebody trying to kill you, you just go there, play cop, so, um.
Should be twenty five you say for that or what?
Yeah, twenty five for role players and thirty for instructors, yeah. At the academy indicators, so I don't, I don't know, I mean, maybe. Maybe at thirty we'll we'll start seeing some people.
I think buyback. I think what buyback's time and a half, isn't it, usually for city and county? So you're talking, a lot of these guys are making fifty bucks an hour to sit in Decatur Public Library and stare at their phone for five hours.
Why can't we just put the feelers out there at twenty five instead of going, okay, let's go to thirty? Let's start here and see what we get and then, and then, not trying to. Be cheap here, but.
Yeah, will the county come over and help coverage while you're shorthanded?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they will respond anyway, won't they?
Yeah, they'll respond, I didn't know if they would maybe put a little emphasis on.
As long as I've been here, I've been solo more than I've had full time officers, so.
The sheriff gave a presentation once about cover over here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he did.
Baker, wasn't Baker two?
It's uh Kelkamp, wasn't it?
AK, but I know what Darren's talking about.
They talked about, in other words, they would have an officer patrol and you just paid them X amount of dollars.
Yeah, that was.
And they would just have, in other words, if they had four on duty, they would have five on duty that night and one of them be assigned in this area over here.
That's what Wade was doing, I think.
Yeah, forty forty hours a week, making, doing forty hours a week.
Wasn't there, there's another like small city that did that in this area, not Mount Glass, there was somebody over in our area.
Yeah, but you, but again, I mean, you get them forty hours a week, that's all you get, and then if there's something. In another ar- area, they're gonna pull that officer out to assist, cause they're still.
Is it their, now, do they pay their rate and we pay it or?
Uh, they just bill you for whatever X amount for the city, they just bill, yeah.
Like a contract agreement.
Yeah, they have a contract.
I think the sheriff said he guaranteed so many hours and this and that, he paid that, and what he looks at is it's an expense to him to have another officer. It's also a benefit to him to have another officer, because he may have two or three in this, working this town, which is different. Then he made, you know, with his additional, one more squad, he's bigger force, and you've got different coverage over here too.
Well, and if he's got five on, this is one area that the other four can ignore, you know, unless something really goes down.
In other words, that's what he said.
I mean, that way the four, they can worry about paying and and.
And I mean, if he gets called away, everybody lives very close anyway, I mean.
Has anyone talked, like, I remember PJ, I PJ did an excellent job, I thought, and he left and he went to county though for Shelby County. So I'm assuming it was for more money then, and I know that there was, he was wanting a raise, I mean, insurance. But did anyone do an ex- interview with him, and did anyone do an excerpt interview with um Jackson?
I spoke to both of them, so, uh, Officer Zylar made ten dollars more an hour going to Shelby County, plus they pay for insurance. Um, Officer Bug makes makes four dollars more an hour. Um, with insurance and a five hundred dollar credit towards his spouse. Um, and a golf membership for free. Um, and they do twelve hour shifts, so when they work twelve hours, every check they get four hours overtime, cause they're doing twelves. So, I mean, he's making a lot more money. And both, both of them left for insurance. Cause they're both young guys with wives that need insurance and they need insurance and they wanna have families and I get it.
Too, the Shelby County and the Week will have a much larger tax base and they have the money to do that. This is kinda what I was talking about, chasing the cat's tail, we're gonna get outspent every time, because we just don't.
America's got the golf course, that's how they go.
Yeah, that's how they, yeah, yeah. She- Shelby's cheaper than Christian County taxes.
No, they're not.
Uh, in the Week where they are.
Well, I had a cabin.
Depends on your house.
In a lake and it wasn't.
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay, so let's move forward here, you wanna, can you, can he go ahead and s- put, start having feelers out?
Yeah, we started having feelers out, we can put something on there.
Twenty five dollars an hour.
We can put something.
Are we selling it right now, tonight, put your feelers out, twenty five dollars an hour, okay?
Yeah, cause we'll have to up the pay, yeah.
So, but you can say that. Okay, so at at twenty five dollars an hour and that officer just works fifteen hours a week. He's gonna make nineteen thousand five hundred dollars in a part time job. So if we have two of them. I guess just quickly figure and just working fifteen hours a week, so that's pretty darn good.
Yeah, yeah, it's very good.
That's.
If you decline. That nineteen thousand dollars a year, if they have buyback offers from their county, they're probably making forty grand a year just on buyback out.
We've cut our budget six thousand dollars.
Resource officers.
Yeah, it was the pay, we call it change, we we budgeted a hundred ninety six thousand, but we didn't, we we did take that, but I think we also increased staff training or something. Equipment, I'll have to look at the full, you know, but we did do that, yes.
Because of. Cause we figured that was even the pay.
No, but.
So, hold off on full time, is that what we're?
Well, I say at some point we do need to look at full time, I mean, so put your feelers out, I mean. We'll talk. I have an idea. But I do think at some point we do need a full time, but we can do part time.
Brian, I wanna thank you two for kicking it up so much.
You're welcome.
It's greatly appreciated.
I I'm open to anything, we if we need to do, whatever we need to do, we gotta keep people or get people, so.
We've increased your hours quite a bit.
A little bit.
Ching ching, where are you? When is your vacation?
Night and then morning today and then night and then, so people don't know if I'm on or off. Or which car I'm in, cause I have cars, more cars than guys now. So, yeah, I'm gonna start moving cars, you're gonna start seeing, we're gonna, we're gonna go somewhere in July, cause my daughter's looking at colleges, so.
We should get a couple of cutouts and put them in the extra cars.
I know, I do wanna do that, put a cutout in the, in the car. Just to move the cars around, yeah. Thank you. Dana will be in one. Jack in another one, Darren, I was smiling, the cardboard. We can do cutouts of all the boards, all the boards.
When are you taking vacation?
Oh, I'm trying to save everything for when my daughter comes back.
Okay, which will be when the baby can travel.
She's gonna be here in the end of the next month, next month for three weeks.
In July? Okay, and Darren, are you guys, are you taking vacation?
That you're in there.
You're just devoted. You don't wanna leave the town, do you?
He lets you leave, all right.
Yeah, if he goes on vacation, he ain't coming back.
Don't let him leave.
No, everybody's doing good, we do need to think of some ways. Because it's maybe we do need to think of some ways to do better. For every, for everybody, yeah.
Yes, for everybody.
It's everybody.
Insurance is outrageous, I mean, that's just, that's, that's always the biggest issue at my work. You know, on our contract is ins- insurance, it's ridiculous for family insurance.
I mean, it's not just police, it's average job, there are shortages everywhere and the ones that can afford it throw money at it and they're gonna get it. You know, when you're, you know, when you're making sixteen bucks an hour, McDonald's.
Now, I I.
It's tired of people. And then when you get them, you gotta keep them over here.
Well, and if you're about to move here, would you, maybe you could do like. We get people kind of in an incident to come here. And maybe keep them that way. Be nice to them too. We have a new subdivision.
No, no, you're absolutely right.
Go back out in the oven, outside.
About finance.
Thank you, guys, ladies, appreciate it.
New business on finance?
Really, the only thing that I have, um, I think to put on the agenda to approve, um. Donnie and Travis have expressed an interest in going to IML, uh, I think there's enough to send three, uh, I would like to go, but if somebody else wants to go. I can cover my own cell, so I know at least Donnie and Trav- is that true, Travis, you have expressed an interest to me, Donnie and you.
We guys went last year and you enjoyed it.
Uh, no, they went the year before.
Oh, the year before, yeah.
Yeah, you cut out the binning for it to go.
Yeah, you, so I went, I paid myself.
You notice I haven't gotten hit for the Christmas party yet this meeting.
Yeah, that's another thing that's been brought up, it's the Christmas party.
Too bad.
So who's going to IML?
I.
The three mosqueteers.
Yeah. Are you interested, Candy?
No, but is anybody else interested?
Wasn't it September what?
No, it'll be girls next year, would you be a girls trip next year?
No, no, they moved it up, but we.
Does somebody have to go every single year?
No, no, nobody has to, no, it's just something, yeah, it's.
They really should, actually, this, I've been before, and it's very informative, it. There are things that you learn up there and that you come back and then actually it has impacted our council whenever we came back.
So, I was just asking, cause I know one year, we didn't send anybody, right?
Last year we didn't, I went myself.
Guess I next did.
Uh, nineteenth, September nineteen, twenty and twenty one, so it's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and come back on Sunday.
Oh, look at the excitement in his voice.
No.
You, have you ever gone, Jen?
Usually get the clerks one in Peoria.
I don't know.
If there were a treasurer one either.
They don't, they, they won't, whenever I was on council before, they had meetings.
Yeah, there's a treasurer, so I don't like a round table they do, um, I mean, that's just something that's just good for everybody.
It is, it is informative.
So we just put it on the agenda, like I said.
IML, will you?
Um, that's all.
Well, I wanna back up just a second, um, be- uh, because the, um, onto the twenty five an hour. Is because when, I wanna know, when is our um employees across the board increased?
It's every, every.
Every June, and what did we decide on?
Three percent, three percent across the board.
Three, so that'll be next month. So it will be for another year and it'll be three percent, because I could, you know, that's gonna kinda cost some heart feelings. Although they don't have to put on a vest and carry a gun for their job, but we, they've been with us a long time, we have great employees that have stayed with us. And you, I kinda know how that feels, so, number one, we gotta be fair with our current employees. And that will be next year, but we want, wanna think about three percent. And also, most um of these part timers that are coming on have already got insurance. They got it through, that's something we don't have to pay, they've already got it, I I can almost guarantee ya.
I guarantee we gave the staff pretty good percentage chunk raises over the last three years.
Well, but when we.
Police officer is almost, it's almost in the same category as Jack that you have to pay. Commensurate to education and state requirements. Jack's gonna make a lot, lot more than. It went by what's required for Jack's position, part time police is the same thing, I mean, you can't, you have to.
I understand, I understand, I'm just throwing these things out, I wanna make sure we're, cause I don't wanna lose anybody.
But that's why we went to the three, so we didn't keep doing these arbitrary pay raises every time.
Every other and who gets it and everything, no, no, that's um.
Fifteen an hour for part time police is ridiculous, I mean, they're, that's.
Well, we're not even paying fifteen, that was in two thousand seventeen, so it's kind of irrelevant.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that's.
If I were paying fifteen.
Actually, I don't think they're getting fifteen, I thought one of them was down for fourteen, that was in seventeen.
This is just, I don't know, this just says two thousand seventeen.
An officer hired in two thousand seventeen at fifteen seventy five.
We haven't changed.
I don't think we've ever raised it.
Getting at fifteen seventy five?
You Ethan?
No, they, any of the are part timers.